Thanks for tuning in on this Thursday morning. We're going to get right into it off the top following the ruling of the Supreme Court of Canada regarding a dispute, a dispute in Quebec, specifically in Saginaw, Quebec. The staunchly devout mayor, Jean Tremblay, has argued that council there should continue to pray, opening every meeting because of history and because of Quebec's Roman Catholic heritage. Well, unanimously, the Supreme Court of Canada has disagreed. As a matter of fact, they've awarded a citizen, Alan Simonneau, more than $30,000 in damages. The court has also issued a legal rebuke to the mayor and to council, a unanimous judgment as well, ordering the city of Saginaw, Quebec to cease prayer inside council chambers. So what does it mean for you? What does it mean for Edmonton? We'll tackle this from a couple of different perspectives before handing it over to you this morning. We thought it made sense to open up by speaking to a representative from Edmonton City Council, Ward 10 councillor Michael Walters, joining us this morning. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, Ryan. How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks. I probably shouldn't reflect the casual nature of our relationship. I should probably call you councillor, shouldn't I?
Well, it's fine.
Now Edmonton has kind of a unique situation because while meetings do open in prayer, they're different prayers every meeting, aren't they?
Yeah, that's right. So, you know, we've done this, we've had this tradition since the late 70s. And, you know, most of that history has involved a range of communities coming forward that, you know, basically represent the fabric of Edmonton and providing us opening prayers, reflections, invocations, blessings of some sort.
What are your thoughts on it? I mean, I'll state my opinion on this right off the bat. We can get into it later. I personally don't think that prayer is relevant, and I think that probably it opens up a couple of cans of worms with regards to atheists or agnostics or those that would be offended by it. What's your personal take on it?
Well, my personal take is that I actually appreciate the way that we do it a great deal, you know, whether it's a faith-based opening prayer or a reflection of some sort from some organization in the community, or, you know, at times we've had our poet laureate be part of the opening of council meetings. I think, you know, for those people who wish to invoke some sort of higher power during that, those couple of moments off the start, they can do that. For those people who just want to quietly reflect, get their thoughts together for the day, you know, think about their role as public servants, whatever it may be, having that, you know, sort of calm time at the start of the meetings, I find important and meaningful. And we do it in such a way where, you know, our City Hall chaplain, John Dowd, wonderful, wonderful person, is always very inclusive and suggests that, you know, while this is going on, people are allowed to participate or not, or able to reflect in their own tradition and do as they choose. So it's very open and certainly not foreboding on other people.
As far as you know councillor, has council ever received a complaint based on this tradition?
I haven't. You know, I've never heard anyone being offended. You know, it's a couple of minutes to start off the meeting. And yeah, so no, not to my office directly.
What would you suggest? I mean, a lot of people are talking about a separation of church and state and how they believe that religious or belief systems really have no relevance inside council chambers or for that matter impacting those that would be making decisions on behalf of taxpayers. How would you respond to that?
Well, I don't see that offering this kind of time at the start of meetings. I don't see how that influences us. You know, any politician and decision maker is influenced by a range of things and a range of people. This is a tradition that I think reflects the service that many communities provide to our city. You know, if you look at the, you know, the Roman Catholic history in Edmonton in terms of, you know, the early settlers and the schools and the hospitals that they built and the commitment that communities had to public service to currently to ending, you know, the work that they, or what they contribute to homelessness and the tenure plan to end homelessness, to the Muslim community, the Jewish community, the Buddhist community, the Baha'i community, the range of communities that actually contribute to making this city a better place among with many people who aren't connected to any of those communities. I think that what our tradition offers is a place for them to get some recognition for the work that they do for Edmonton and for them to offer us some support in the work that we're trying to do and the service that we're giving to our city. So I think it's very poetic, it's very thoughtful, it's very reflective, and it's very diverse. And certainly for those people who don't have beliefs and don't have any particular faith, of which I know and love many of those people myself, they have the same opportunity to come to council and participate in that practice.
I do think that, and like you've said, and it probably is quite obvious for me to state this, but it's a much different scenario to have different faith groups. And I mean, and you said even Edmonton's poet laureate speaking ahead of time, or if there's a moment of meditation. I mean, if someone were to come in, if a yogi were to come in and give some sort of breathing exercise ahead of, would that qualify?
Absolutely. You know, that's the nature of our practice is that, you know, we, we work through the Edmonton Interfaith Center, so there is, you know, obvious room for faith groups, clearly, to come in and offer those opening prayers, blessings, invocations, and room for others. Like, yeah, mindfulness, poetry, those are the sorts of things that, you know, our practice is open to.
Very, very interesting stuff. You expect that this will become more of an issue councillor now that this Supreme Court ruling has been issued and now that people are talking about it? I mean, do you expect that Edmonton may have to reexamine the policy? Or would you suggest that at this point, the structure that you've got in place, the one that you've detailed for us this morning, might already sort of be able to stand in the face of criticism?
Well, we'll see. You know, I'm not a lawyer and I think that, you know, our folks here, that our lawyers are gonna, you know, are thinking about this and, you know, sort of discerning what this decision might mean for us. I think I'm hopeful that, you know, we can continue to work with the broader faith community and others who have any sort of spiritual and in some sort of non-organized or non-spiritual but yet organized practice, like the atheist community, there's the Society of Edmonton Atheists, I think you're speaking with a gentleman later.
You bet.
Who have an organized, an actual organization. And I know in the past we've invited them to come and provide us with some opening as well. And I think that invitation certainly is a standing one. So I'm hopeful that we can continue this practice in some form that, you know, honors fundamentally taking the ability to take a few quiet moments at the start of what are often very tense and very busy council meetings where we make big decisions about the place in which we live, where we can take a few minutes at the start to reflect on our service and why we're there and that we are doing this for the greater good and to build a great, healthy and inclusive community. And there's many ways that, and many people who can participate in helping us do that at the start of every meeting.
We're talking to Ward 10 city councillor Michael Walters. Councillor, before I let you go here, I've got a text message from Al who's listening in regarding the chaplain down at City Hall. Can you just provide some understanding to us on exactly the role that that chaplain has and maybe any sort of denominational affiliation, anything along those lines?
Well, I'm not, you know, I might speak to his denominational affiliation. I think the role that he plays here is coordinated with the Edmonton Interfaith Center. It's, you know, the city, whether it's our work on homelessness, whether it's our work on any number of issues, mental health, all these sorts of things that the city is particularly concerned about, coordinates with sort of the interfaith community. And who also that community as a whole does a great deal of work for the city in many, many aspects. So his work is that, he assists with all the protocol items, works closely with the military, with the police, with fire on the graduation ceremonies that we do, on the recognition ceremonies that we do. So he's really a connector to the larger community in a spiritual way. And again, as per our practice and our policy is to be open to people from all backgrounds, all faith, believers and non-believers, to make sure that they're connected to this place.
All right, good stuff. So that's side one of the coin, Michael Walters, Ward 10 city councillor. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. You can follow Michael on Twitter at WaltersYeg. That's WaltersYeg. Ewan on the text line at 6:30, 6:30 says, despite our cultural diversity, Canada is a Christian country, whether you agree or appreciate it or not. As far as praying before a public meeting, what harm will it do? This country, our provinces, these cities need all the help we can get. That might be true. We're becoming far too secular, says Ewan. Heck, even the Royal Canadian Legion says a prayer after reading the list of the debt. Lord God of hosts be with us yet lest we forget, lest we forget. That from Ewan. Al, as mentioned, says, well, he thinks it's a bunch of BS that he's paying for a chaplain down at City Hall. And Mick, this is going to upset some people. We understand that this will be a controversial discussion. Mick says prayer is a waste of time. Religion is the worst threat to mankind. Religions, if not banned, should be taxed, at the very least not in public. Let us know what you think. The other side of the coin, when we come back, Luke Fevin from the Society of Edmonton Atheists. We're talking about prayers before council meetings. Let us know what you think. The city of Saginaw, Quebec, we'll have to dig into its pocketbook, more than $30,000 in damages awarded by the Supreme Court of Canada to Alan Simonneau. He's a citizen out in Saginaw who, well, essentially said, I'm offended that my city council is making the sign of the cross and participating in a Roman Catholic prayer before every council meeting. The Supreme Court of Canada unanimously agreed with him, ordering the city to stop those prayers before meetings. Yesterday, following that ruling, the city of Ottawa did not recite its usual prayer, invoking Almighty God before the start of its meetings. Mayor Jim Watson there saying he'd review the practice. Oshawa, Ontario has vowed to continue to recite the Lord's Prayer in defiance of the Supreme Court. If you're just joining us, we spoke to city councillor Michael Walters. We've also exchanged emails with Mayor Don Iverson, both of them pointing out that Edmonton City Council, while opening with a prayer every meeting, welcomes members of different faith systems, different religious denominations to offer up prayers in a spirit of diversity. Luke Fevin represents the Society of Edmonton Atheists. Last time he was on the show, spawned some pretty interesting debate. I'm pleased to welcome Luke back to the program. Good morning.
Good morning, Ryan.
Now Luke, we already know what you're going to say, that there shouldn't be prayer before council meetings, right?
Yes.
Does it make a difference if it's multi-denominational, if it's done under an inclusive spirit, welcoming people from all different belief systems, including atheism, to address council?
No.
How come?
Neither, neither does it make any difference to the Supreme Court, apparently. The word of the day, the word of the ruling yesterday was neutrality. And to read just one section out of several hundred pages here from yesterday, "State neutrality means the state must neither encourage nor discourage any form of religious conviction whatsoever." That's it. And that is where we should be for council meetings. Now, neither myself nor the Supreme Court is saying that we should make everything totally secular. No one's saying that there isn't room for celebrating diversity or beliefs, but when we do it as a regular thing, every single seating and the fact that the vast majority of, you know, we can cloud it with diversity or we want, but we know that the vast majority of these things are prayers. They are prayers to deities, they are prayers to God, and that is absolutely forbidden based on this Supreme Court ruling.
Now Luke, I'm taking a look here at part of this ruling and the court saying that even if prayer is said to be inclusive, it may nevertheless exclude non-believers. The judgment affirming a government's responsibility to remain neutral. On the other side of the coin, I know, because I saw it on Twitter yesterday, you had quite a back and forth with former Edmonton city councillor, now a federal conservative candidate, Kerry Deaut, where you suggested that praying in any context according to the belief system of any religion is actually ignoring the rights of the non-religious. What about the rights of the religious?
Well, this is actually an incorrect juxtaposition as put forward sometimes to defend this. No one is preventing anyone's right to freedom of religion or freedom of expression here, given the fact that people can pray in their churches, pray in their houses, pray in the street, pray privately in a room before the council meeting, pray, get together and pray after a meeting. We can hold moments of silence, which I'm a fan of incidentally, and people can pray together silently and personally, as Jesus suggested in the Bible. So no one is being prevented from their freedom of religion. But what we do have in multiple rulings, and really the Supreme Court just nailed it down yesterday, is that for the 27% in the last census, the 27% of us that do not believe in gods, when you make us stand there quietly to observe your prayer, it's being disrespectful, it's denying us our right to be free, a fundamental right to freedom from religion, and that includes coercion, because I don't know whether you've ever been to a family reunion in southern Alberta, but you know, there's some coercion to join the prayer. And when people look at you and you're not praying, you know, there's some stigmatization that goes on because you're not part of the group. And that's why these rights exist, to protect people from that coercion and that stigmatization.
Luke, you're not going to start attacking people's rights to pray before their family picnics, are you?
No, absolutely not. And, you know, this came up last time. One of the things that's pretty consistent with atheists is the support of the freedom of religion. It is just where it's impinging in, creeping in on the rights of other people. And as I said earlier, the Supreme Court is really, is really saying that the state needs to be neutral. And the council meeting prayers certainly infringes on that Supreme Court ruling.
We're talking to Luke Fevin from the Society of Edmonton Atheists. Just a couple of quick hits here off the text line. Kerry says not praying because you are forced not to is actually pro atheism. Someone else is calling you intolerant, Luke.
Okay, well, you know, we won't have time today, but I'll tell you, the Supreme Court ruling actually directly addresses this not praying supports atheism. Supreme Court rules that absolutely doesn't. You know, we mentioned Mr. Deaut yesterday, you know, he was making some points that, you know, we've always done it, so that's okay. Supreme Court ruling blows that out. The majority of people want to do it, Supreme Court blows that out. You know, no one's complained, Supreme Court blows that out. I mean, this ruling is pretty comprehensive on getting rid of a lot of these fallacies that not doing something, abstinence is the word that the ruling uses, abstinence does not mean that it is anti-religion in any way, shape or form.
All right, Luke, we gave you the heads up on this question to let you know it was coming because we're not really big on blindsiding people here. But Greg is listening in, it sounds like he knows you. He says Luke Fevin is a huge hypocrite. His son was born premature and he asked everyone in the company to say a prayer for his son. How does he reconcile that?
Well, I certainly don't know which Greg we're talking about.
It may be an alias.
Yeah, yeah, and I certainly thank him for the, you know, for the love involved with this one. But fundamentally, it's untrue. I have never asked anybody to pray, certainly not during the health issues that my son had. And I would go further and say though, that during that trying time, lots of my people are friends of faith, did want to pray and they were actually concerned that, hey, if we pray, will that offend you? And my position on that, my wife's position on that was, no, absolutely, go ahead. If how you want to send love and good wishes is through prayer, then absolutely, and we thank you for it.
But do you have any sense within your own internal conviction that prayer under any banner, under any denomination, to any god could actually be effective or have a measurable impact in life?
There have been 17 studies done since the 1950s. I know a bit about this, actually. And 16 of those studies showed that there was absolutely no benefit from intercessory prayer. There was one that showed a minor benefit and then when they extrapolated it, it failed. So no, there's study after study after study says that intercessory prayer does not work. Now that said, you know, I'm all for a little bit of meditation, but there is a little, there is a significant difference between everybody taking a moment to take a breath and think about what we're doing and actually worshiping deities. That's the, that's the big difference here. And there's no place for worshiping deities on a regular basis in a council meeting.
All right, Luke, as always, we run up against the clock. I know we could talk forever and ever. We'll get you back on the show a ways down the road. We'll let our listeners know that currently you and I and one of your buddies down in Calgary, Kevin Olnick, are working on setting up what should be a lively debate here on these airwaves.
Look forward to it, Ryan. Thank you.
Thanks for the call, Luke. That's Luke Fevin from the Society of Edmonton Atheists. The news is up next and then we're getting to your calls, your text messages. You can email me via 630 chat as well. Prayer in council, does it belong? We're talking about prayer before council meetings and we've just been slammed with comments, which is excellent because we're all about conversation. If you've got a thought on this, your perspective matters. Get in touch. People tweeting at me right now. Derek Hudson on Twitter says, in my opinion, Edmonton City Council should keep the practice of prayers before council meetings. It's a very inclusive approach. Lincoln on Twitter says it's a great way for dialogue, although I do find it strange that they're all praying together since they're different. But maybe that's the point. Brent says it's not hurting anyone, so why stop? And then councillor Michael Walters, who spoke with us right off the top of the show today, has followed up on Twitter, as has councillor Dave Loke, and both of them pointing out that the first blessing of the year down at Edmonton City Council comes from our first people. So there's reflection of First Nations perspective or belief. They mentioned that different groups from yogis and Buddhists and members of the Baha'i faith, all the way through to Catholics and Protestants and the Jewish community and the Muslim community, whatever the case may be, it's an open invitation down at Edmonton City Council. Should it be though? Should it be part of the policy? That's the question. Trevor's called in at 780-496-0063. The phone lines are now open. Trevor, what are your thoughts on this?
Get rid of it. There's no use for it. He just said that there's been multiple issues with it. And I dislike this whole, oh, you're not tolerant about our beliefs and it's all about diversity, but religion itself is about intolerance. If you don't believe in my particular Jesus or God or whatever, you're going to burn in my particular hell. It's all about segregation of the planet.
Yeah. Now, do you believe that it makes a difference that Edmonton's council opens up this moment of reflection, or if we want to call it a moment of prayer, to different faith communities? While the other community in question, the one that is in the headlines today, the city of Saginaw, Quebec, is under fire because they've only been participating in Roman Catholic prayer? Do you think that makes a difference?
Prayer itself is a waste of time. They could be doing other things, having better discussions. It doesn't help. Which deity are they praying to? And does it matter? You know, it's like, there's no reason for it. It's all garbage.
All right, Trevor, I appreciate your perspective. On Twitter right now, Just Aaron says, unfortunately nowadays, people can't do anything without offending other people, so they should just phase out the prayers. While Lisa on Twitter says, many of our community groups say grace before events that have meals. So how far should restrictions on public prayers go? It's a good question. Julie says, if we stop asking the Lord to help with the decisions of our city, we are really going down the wrong road. We are opening ourselves up for problems. Now Julie, and she's capitalized the Lord, as many believers do, indicates here, though she hasn't professed her specific faith, but sounds to me like, if I can guess Julie, and feel free to follow up with another text message, it sounds like a born again Christian. So if she is, then Julie would have the conviction that a prayer to Jesus Christ would be a wise move for council, for council to receive guidance. But what if you don't believe in that? Do you want your council praying to the Lord Jesus Christ if, for example, your belief is in Allah? Or your belief is in no God whatsoever? Or your belief is in thousands of different gods? Listener here says prayer hasn't seemed to help anyone, anywhere in the world. I guess if it makes the liberals at City Hall feel better, they're going to do it regardless of my opinion, as long as they're not paying for it and I am, they'll do what they want. How many preachers do they need? 13 is not enough? Interesting take. Canadian Carl says, I'm glad to see the new Supreme Court of Canada ruling. Religion has no place in government. Your religious belief is exactly that, yours. Do your praying on your own time. This evens the playing field for all cultures and beliefs. That from Canadian Carl. Richard has called in. Richard, where do you stand on this?
Well, I'm just curious. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious if they've ever done a survey in the last 6,000 years of recorded history and how many people have died in the name of religion? Just curious.
Yeah, well, I mean, you talk to a lot of people, they'll point out that the majority of the world's wars have come about as a result of warring or battling religions, different belief systems.
I think if most people, I got nothing against religion. I think it's all within ourselves. We have to believe in ourselves before we can believe in anything else. I think if more people took the time to reflect on their own, you know, within themselves, I think we'd get a lot further. But kind of just my thoughts. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Richard. Thanks for calling in. Bert's calling in from Westlock this morning. Bert, what say you?
Well, the way I look at it, everybody has a God because that's the reason they have for living. So they pick whatever it is that gives them a reason to live. So everybody has one.
Well, and you might be able to expand that thought, Bert, to say not necessarily everyone has a God, but everyone has a belief system. Because then you can include those that wouldn't believe in a God, right?
Right. But you have a reason to live and that's what it is.
Yeah, you bet. So the question is then, does whatever your belief system is have a role or have a place in a public forum like a council chamber?
Well, it is there anyway, isn't it? Like, those people are put in a position to provide for what we consider the need for us to exist. So they're providing services that we as human beings have decided that this is my reason for living and I want you to help me get there.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is, and I don't know if it's an issue because I think it's actually kind of a feather in the cap of humanity. But we have such diversity that it's kind of tough to say this is our common focus.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, that's absolutely right.
So Bert, you would support keeping that moment of reflection or that prayer before council?
Yes, because there's so many ways of getting distracted from what your position is, especially when you're in the public life and the public, the public needs to know where you're headed, where you want to go. And sometimes we need to be brought back on track. And with the diversity of the communities, every day you got somebody up there saying, hmm, this is the way we think. And I think they need to take it into consideration.
Thanks for the call, Bert. Really appreciate you checking out the show.
You're welcome.
Now, here's my thought, and I'll be honest with you, when I have a really strong opinion on something, I'll tell you. But in life, I think we're all probably like this to a certain extent, we're not always really strongly convicted about every single topic. I can certainly see why a specific Roman Catholic focused prayer does not have any place in a public forum like a council chamber. But when you start talking about welcoming in people from all different groups, all different elements of the community, including atheists and agnostics, including those from eastern religions, including those from western religions, from new religions, from longstanding traditional religions, in a way, it kind of reminds us who makes up our community. It's kind of an expose on the fabric of our community, isn't it? I'm not sure that I want to see it eliminated from Edmonton's council meetings because I like the spirit of it. But I'll also tell you, if someone there took leadership and decide, and I'm not saying they're not showing leadership now, let me just say, if someone down there took a step forward and said, listen, we're just going to get rid of this because it's too controversial, I really wouldn't have a problem with that either. Chad, what do you think?
Good morning, Ryan. Well, you know, it's kind of funny, and I'm just saying this tongue in cheek, but you're starting a whole religious war yourself here.
What's that?
You're starting a whole religious war yourself.
Yeah, yeah, I might very well be. That's not the spirit of the conversation though, but that might be the end result. Yeah.
I understand that. You know, my whole feeling is that it makes you feel good. You know, my whole feeling is that if it makes you feel good and if you're not hurting anybody, if you want to take a second and say thanks to your particular, your God or your belief system, that's a wonderful thing. My belief system personally is my little wife at home, I give a kiss to every morning before I go to work and I thank her. She's what makes me want to be on this planet, not necessarily a religious icon or a belief system, but it's everybody's own belief that should be just, you know, left alone.
Yeah.
Keep it to yourself. If it makes you feel good, do it. That's the way I feel and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
All right, Chad, thanks very much. So there you have it. Chad kissing his wife on the cheek every morning before he leaves, that's his moment of reflection. That's how he reminds himself what his day's all about. What's your day all about? What's your moment of reflection? We're talking prayer. We'll get to more of your takes right after this. Our phone lines are all full, text lines are all lit up. Cliff wonders, does Edmonton City Council go on to ask the Lord to fix potholes after their prayers? Brian says, I'm an atheist and I don't care if there's prayer in city council because I'm not offended by it. Anyone that does get offended are intolerant or have cracks in their own faith and they obviously feel threatened by others. Even people who don't have faith and get upset by this non-issue have personal problems with their own beliefs. This is a non-issue because council has struck a balance with the way they've done it. If you're just joining us, Edmonton City Council opens its meetings with prayers or reflections from different religious denominations. That's not the case in Saginaw, Quebec. The Supreme Court of Canada yesterday issuing a unanimous judgment, awarding citizen Alain Simenot $30,000 in damages, more than 30,000 in fact, and issuing a legal rebuke to the devout mayor of Saginaw, Jean Tremblay, who said that Quebec's Roman Catholic heritage justifies his council's prayer. Levi has called in, 780-496-0063. Levi, what do you think about this?
Yeah, my thing about this is we have freedom of religion. We don't have freedom from religion. And people get those two confused and then they take the freedom and they turn it into something that's offensive. People do things all the time that I don't agree with, but I don't, you know, I realize that not everybody is me, thank goodness, and not everybody believes like me. So I think we should just, you know, understand that people are going to do things a little different and if they want to pray, then let them pray. You know, I don't, I don't think they're doing it to be offensive. And there's, yeah, that's what I think.
All right, Levi, so you don't have a problem with it. Thanks very much. Bill, what about you? What's your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I go back to a caller before that said that we all have a belief in something and what we're here for. And I think, you know, that takes religion out of it altogether. The reason we're here and what I'm living for is evolutionary. It's, I live for my daughters, my daughters, and I live for my grandsons and to keep them going. And my daughters will be doing the same for their sons and their grandsons and whoever comes along. That's what I'm living for.
So Bill.
It has nothing to do with religion. It's all evolution to me.
And what, how does that impact your perspective on whether or not Edmonton City Council should open up meditation moments or reflections or prayers?
Well, I don't really, I don't really think it's needed, to tell you the truth. If I was in the council, I wouldn't want to have to sit through a prayer meeting if it was something I disagreed with or I disbelieved in. Now again, what they can do is if everybody who's at these meetings agree with it, then there should be no problem.
Right. Bill, thanks for calling in.
If somebody doesn't, then don't do it.
Yeah, there you have it. Pretty simple, isn't it? When you look at it like that. Gary out of Westlock this morning says, if people don't like the prayer, they can just say something else in their own head. You know, Big Sean says, why is this such a big deal? If people want to pray, let them pray. If you don't want to pray, then don't pray. Just shut up and hum to yourself for a few minutes. It's not going to hurt you. Ted says religious values, regardless of what sect, generally offer moral and ethical values to base our lives on. What one place could use a few more reminders of that in their decisions than political reflection? Ian says, as an agnostic, if they want to take two minutes to reflect, go for it. It would probably be the best two minutes they actually accomplish something meaningful in the day. Brandon out of Drayton Valley says, a prayer in true faith can be meaningful for all. A religious prayer is focused on one set of beliefs. It can all be included and no one involved feels excluded or offended. Leave it be. Mark says, I take offense to the texter earlier on who said that most wars have been started by religions. If you read any of the major religions out there, you'll see that all of them say, be good to your fellow man or be good to each other. People and mankind, we skew religion so that they have an excuse to want more land or to enslave other people. Do we really believe if there was no religion, everyone would live in peace? I really doubt it. So Mark disagreeing with John Lennon. And Brian says, if it's non-denominational, then who cares? What if luck was your religion? Are we going to start banning someone from saying good luck? And a good point from another listener who says, please read the opening line of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Okay. As we head to break, part one, whereas Canada is founded upon principles that recognize the supremacy of God and the rule of law. There it is. The Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms guarantees the rights and freedoms set out in it, subject only to such reasonable limits prescribed by law as can be demonstrably justified in a free and democratic society. Everyone has the following fundamental freedoms. Freedom of conscience and religion, freedom of thought, belief, opinion and expression, freedom of peaceful assembly and freedom of association. Read into that what you will. We'll be back with a couple more phone calls right after this. We're talking about prayer before council meetings and we'll resume this into the next hour after we check in with AUPE President Guy Smith. Love this one from James. James says, Ryan, why don't you say the Lord's Prayer and pledge allegiance to the crown every day when you start your show? You know, I was having a conversation with a buddy the other day. We used to sing the National Anthem before every morning in school, before every day started in class, we'd sing the National Anthem. Do they still do that in schools? Should they? Should we sing the National Anthem before every hockey game? I mean, we can expand this conversation as much as you like. Coming up next hour, what is with the policy? The government's trying to distance itself from now. Public sector workers having to disclose who they're volunteering for during an election? We'll ask the president of a big union representing a whole bunch of you why he thinks it's so very wrong.